I'd like to call to order the Monroe County Public Library Board of Trustees meeting for August 20th, 2025. If you would, we're going to go around and introduce ourselves and you can share what you're reading if you'd like. You want to start?
My name's Chris Hall and I am listening to "1984 Julia" by Sandra Newman.
As usual, I don't have my book pulled up. I'm Amy O'Shaughnessy and I just finished "How Not to Drown in a Glass of Water" by Angie Cruz.
I'm Greer Carson. I'm rereading Darwin's Dangerous Idea by Dan Dennett and I'm watching my kids play Tiny Bookshop, which I recommend for anyone who thinks that video games are just one type of thing, violent, fast-paced, anti-literate. Not so. It's a really cool indie game.
That's really cool. I'm Jamie Burkhart and I just read, hmm, "The Undead Fox of Deadwood Forest," which was a kid's book and it was adorable. I recommend it for everyone.
I'm Kathy Loser and I can't remember what I'm reading. I've just got stacks everywhere.
I'm Whitney Eads and right now I am reading a graphic novel called Cardboard. I like that one.
Okay. I move that we have a motion for the consent agenda from last time for July 16th Board Meeting, monthly financial report, monthly bills and payment, personnel report, and board meeting calendar.
So moved. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion approved. And now we're going to hear from Greer for the Director's Monthly Report.
Okay, we've made some improvements to our Vital collection and those improvements include subject headings, summaries, pagination, and reading levels. These books previously had very little metadata to aid vital users in finding materials to fit their needs and interests. So these changes really do enhance the accessibility and usability for our Vital print collection. Thank you to our Vital Circulation Services and Collection Development teams for coordinating on this project and a special thank you to our cataloger and metadata librarian TD for updating all of the mark records and spine labels associated with this project. Construction of the Gordon Pike Roundabout was completed earlier this month after a challenging few months of dicey one-way traffic in and out of the Southwest Branch. While the Gordon-Fulleton connection is still under construction, Southwest patrons can now more easily access our branch. We'd like to thank all of our Southwest patrons and visitors for their patience these past few months, as we know it's been a challenge. Our Read to Me program saw a significant uptick in participation last month. We'd like to thank our friends at New Leaf New Life for their renewed emphasis and promotion of this program and on literacy in general, which we believe is behind that uptick. There's also a remarkable anecdote under Goal Three in the report concerning one of our outreach associates, Dan, which is almost too touching to read aloud. So I encourage everyone to take another look at the report and to read that particular anecdote. It involves a young Bookmobile patron, a forthcoming move out of the country, and hug. This was shared with all staff by outreach manager Chris Jackson and it has had an emotional impact on us. On July 4th, we suffered a ransomware attack that compromised parts of our network, including several servers and workstations. The breach was discovered on July 6th and our IT team swiftly took action to contain the threat. Attackers exploited access through our firewall using VPN. We have since disabled the affected VPN access, changed administrator passwords, and restored critical systems from our July 3rd backups specifically. Affected servers and workstations, including some staff computers, were evaluated to determine if they'd been compromised and where appropriate have been wiped and/or replaced. The aim of the attack appears to have been to encrypt data rather than to steal data. We reached out to Homeland Security Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency, who in turn passed our report to the Multi-State Information Sharing and Analysis Center, which is part of the State Center for Internet Security. We also contacted the FBI to report the incident. We have since reviewed all staff computers and addressed all machines that had files encrypted by the attack. We are currently reviewing our security policies to see if there are other precautions we can take to prevent future attacks. We are also continuing to monitor our network and workstations for any residual risks. Thank you to Ned Baugh and our IT department for moving rapidly to stop this attack and to remediate the impact. And finally, we are very proud to be sending multiple MCPL staff this year to the ILF, or Indiana Library Federation Annual Conference, to give presentations. These respective presentations will focus on readers' advisory as a means to expanding readers' horizons and on how MCPL manages the challenges associated with pest infestations, including policy, procedure, and patron communication. And yes, that does include bedbugs, a threat which more and more public libraries face every day. We have, of course, developed a very robust mitigation program and are eager to share our success story with peer libraries at ILF this year. Happy to answer any questions about the Director's Report. But not to read the anecdote because choked some of us up.
It is very sweet.
Yes.
I had a quick question.
Yeah.
Just for clarification, and it's just one of those things personally interests me. So back up to where, one of the first things you talked about, reading levels, like coding the books in a certain way, what does that look like here? So helping readers find materials at their reading level, and I can read this, but with the teacher background, we talk a lot about Lexiles.
Sure, yes, yes.
And things like that, so.
If Lisa Jampelli wouldn't mind coming up to the mic early, she's going to be presenting a little bit later, but she is one of our resident experts, perhaps our resident expert, and she can talk about that.
Thanks. Yeah, it's a really good question. We don't categorize or shelve materials by reading level normally in the children's department, for example. Publishers, different publisher series, we purchase leveled readers and so they'll have the leveling there. You can also find in the records, oftentimes there's AR listings and things like that. With the Vital project, it was particularly needed for their area because they're working so closely with very beginner readers and ordering from a lot of different sources that would have their own kind of leveling system. So it was really confusing to come in, for a reader to be able to find just recreational reading material that would be at their level. So Mick is here actually, also from the Vital Department, and they worked on kind of coming up with their own leveling system so that they're going to continue to look at the new materials as they come in and kind of assess, okay, this item is really matching at a level zero, this one's at a level one, so that it'll be able to bring different kinds of materials together into a consistent leveling system. Yeah. Correct me if I missed anything, Mick?
All right. Thanks.
Any other questions before we move on?
No. A lot of great summer programming that was in the report but wasn't necessarily talked about, so it's an impressive month of July report.
Summer is when we shine, for sure.
I move, now that we hear the operational budget and adjustments per Indiana Senate Bill One, and vote on the hours for adjustment for our downtown library. Do I have a second to hear more?
So moved. Second. Greer, do you want to summarize?
Sure, yeah. Before we put this matter to a vote, I'll try to briefly summarize the proposal and some of the discussion we've had to date. So Indiana Senate Bill One will result in MCPL receiving between $350,000 and $400,000 less in property tax revenue each year over the next three years. Beyond that, we don't yet have projected revenue numbers. We began looking at options for absorbing this revenue reduction early in the year. From the start, our goal has been to adopt a strategy which would have the least negative impact on the least number of library patrons and library staff. Those options included a reduction in the overall number of staff, a reduction in operating hours across the system, a reduction in collection spending, postponing facilities, maintenance, and improvement projects, and reducing overall staff compensation and benefits. In looking at our current staffing model, we recognized that we could reduce overall staffing by the equivalent of five full-time positions over the next two years, which would achieve the goal of absorbing the revenue reduction. We also realized we could do this by way of attrition rather than having to implement layoffs. While it saves us money in payroll expenses, a reduction of five full-time positions has a direct impact on the way we staff our public service desks, how we provide online and over-the-phone assistance, and how we plan and deliver programs, and many other internal operations which contribute to the positive experience patrons expect to have when they use the library. In other words, a reduction in staff has an impact on our staff scheduling. At the same time, we looked at our various hours of operations across the system, knowing that closing a single location for an entire day would negatively impact a large number of patrons in numerous ways with regard to resource and space use. We considered how the downtown library was underutilized during the last two hours of the day, Monday through Thursday. Our door count, computer use, and room reservation data all suggested a downward trend for those hours over the past few years. But perhaps more importantly, our own daily observations of how and how often the downtown library is utilized during those evening hours suggested that closing this facility at 7:00 PM Monday through Thursday, as we do at our branch locations, would make good financial and operational sense. It would allow us to adjust staff schedules so that the reduction in staffing does not necessarily result in a reduction in staff who are available to assist patrons at any given point in time, and it would satisfy our goal of having the least negative impact on the least number of patrons. Finally, it would make library hours consistent across all three MCPL locations every day of the week. We shared some possible strategies at our winter and spring board meetings prior to the eventual passage of SB One. Following the bill's passage and confirmation on total revenue reduction, we began discussing this in detail at the June Board Meeting and continued the conversation at the July Board Meeting. We've done a handful of interviews with local media outlets on this proposal since the July meeting, and many of our programming librarians who host weekday evening programs have discussed the proposal with their regular attendees to gauge potential impact of such a change in hours on their ability to attend those programs. We've also received some public comments asking us to reconsider this proposal and offering alternative ideas. Six individuals and/or groups have reached out to us with thoughts on how this change in hours would impact their ability to use our reservable spaces. These have been very constructive and supportive comments and we're grateful for them because they demonstrate how valuable this library is to these individuals and groups. It also gives us another opportunity to explain our reasoning and to consider how we might approach our after-hours event management with flexibility in the future. In summary, we feel that changing the downtown library's hours to match the hours of our Elletsville and Southwest branches will help us adjust to the reduction in total library staff and is an appropriate response to the patterns of use we've observed over the past few years. Above all, it impacts the least number of patrons in a minimal way, but that's not to say that it impacts no one. And we do understand that some patrons will be inconvenienced, particularly those who rely on the library for free meeting room space after 7:00 PM. Our administrative team has been working with local businesses and nonprofits to update and expand our current list of alternative meeting spaces, and we will continue to help any group or individual who needs assistance in finding a space during those evening hours. If passed, the new hours would go into effect beginning Monday, November 24th. We chose this date so as to be at least 90 days out from any current space reservations we have, so that our patrons and staff would have ample time to adjust, and in order to make hours changes outside of the middle of the coldest or hottest days of the year. So with that, tonight, we put the proposal to a vote.
Any additional questions before we vote?
Can I ask you to talk about the frontline librarian staff, like what their opinions of this are? I really have valued hearing from administration, from you, from seeing a lot of data as we consider this. Can you talk about what staff feelings are about this change?
Sure. Being careful not to presume to speak for all staff.
Of course, right.
I would say the strong consensus at this point is that this is a really good move, not only because I think staff understand we have to find a way to absorb the reduction in staff, but because that schedule adjustment that's going to be required, if we make this change, will hit staff immediately. And so if we make this change and we close at seven, like we do with our branches, it makes those two schedules across the day much easier for us to manage for staff. I think there are some other reasons why most of our staff are in support of this, and it has to do with, again, the observations of folks downtown saying, we just don't see a lot of people coming through the door after seven o'clock. Does it make sense for us to stay open? Little bit of consciousness about we're stewards of taxpayer dollars and we should have the right hours and all of those kinds of things, but a lot of it really is, like if we're reducing by that many full-time equivalents, it's going to have an impact on how we can schedule people on the desk. And if we follow the data and our observations and mirror downtown hours against Southwest and Elletsville, it'll make it a lot easier to adjust staff schedules at the same time. And I think that is, right now, I said consensus, maybe it's sort of like the prevailing notion. I don't know for sure, and we haven't talked to every staff member about whether or not they like the idea. I look over at my colleagues and I don't know if they want to smile and go, yeah, it's safe to say everybody's in support of this, but that's the sense that I have.
Or at least understands the reasoning behind it.
Yes. Again, we've done our best to make the rounds and talk to every department and explain the reasoning for all of this, including the reduction in the total number of staff. And I can certainly say that we haven't had a lot of staff come to us and say, I really don't think we should close the library at seven o'clock. That's not across the board, and there are some people who I know feel that way, but by and large, I think the feeling across the library is this makes good sense.
I just want to share that I appreciate the idea that other businesses might be stepping up to help some of these groups, well, actually help them as well if they take on groups of people, maybe there'll be some.
Yeah, I'm going to point to Lorraine Martin and her team in our administrative offices. They've been working really hard on taking that list that currently exists on our website and we refer patrons to a lot, and updating that and trying to expand it so we can say there really are a lot of other places in town that will give you either a free meeting space or a reasonably priced meeting space. It's not the same as saying that's the equivalent of meeting at the library, and we understand that for sure, but we are trying to do our best to not just leave these groups hanging, so.
And helpful to understand that staff are wanting to make sure that when the library's open, that they're able to staff the pickup window.
Right, right.
And staff children's services and all the spaces that the downtown library provides.
Exactly, yeah. We really don't like when we're in a crunch situation with staffing, and this can happen sometimes with call-ins or other sort of emergencies, but when you're like, you know, we might have to close that area for the next hour or so, or early for the night in order to pull staff to cover other places. This will help with that as we continue to reduce by five FTEs, so, yeah.
I just want to say that I think that it's commendable that we want to move toward a decision that doesn't lay off people, because I think that we are a good employer and I think we put that first because that equals good service to the patrons as well. So I think it's the best option for us right now.
Thank you. I know we often like to point out Goal Number Five in our current strategic plan because it's kind of new for us to include sort of an inward-looking goal in our strategic planning, but that's what you just said, Kathy, is exactly what that goal is about. So, yeah, we take that pretty seriously.
So I'd rather have people providing salaries to the homes than having meeting rooms open for an hour or two.
Yeah.
Okay. So the motion before us is to vote on the hours adjustment for the downtown library. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion approved. Do I have a motion to hear from Gary and the 2026 Budget and Approval for Public Advertising? So moved. Second.
So, last month, we went over the first draft of the 2026 budget. An updated version of the budget is included in the board packet. The public notice for the budget is on the first page of the August budget report, and it's on page 56 in the packet. We went over the budget numbers last month, so I'll mainly focus on the public notice approval tonight. But if there are any questions on the details of the 2026 budget report, I'd be happy to discuss them. If the budget notice is approved tonight, the next step in the budget process is to post the budget notice to taxpayers in Gateway, which is the state budget information website. The budget notice provides the public hearing date and time, which will be at the September 17th Board Meeting, and it'll be at the Southwest Branch. The public notice also provides the adoption meeting information. The budget adoption will occur at the October 15th Board Meeting here at the main branch. Column two on the budget notice shows the total spending budget. The total spending budget for next year is about $13.8 million. This includes the allocation for spending in the operating fund, along with the debt fund and rainy day fund. Column three on the budget notice shows the maximum estimated funds to be raised from the 2026 property tax levy. The total revenue from the property tax levy is estimated to be $8,917,819, split between the operating fund and the debt fund. This budget notice does not include library revenue from other sources like investment income or local income tax. It just shows revenue from the tax levy. We received the assessed value for the county after this board report was completed. This is the first time in 15 years that assessed value has decreased. The operating surplus report on page 70 shows assessed value and the library tax rate since 2021. In 2021, the library tax rate was 9.42 cents per hundred dollars of assessed value, and assessed value at that time was $7.8 billion. Assessed value goes up each year to its peak in 2025 of $11.185 billion. Then for 2026, assessed value decreases to about $11.09 billion. So that's a decrease of about $100 million, but when we look at the trend in assessed value, we can see that we've had a couple of years since 2021 where the assessed value has gone up by over a billion dollars in one year. So a $100 million decrease is relatively small. The library tax rate will be 8.04 cents per hundred dollars of assessed value in 2026. That's a slight increase from last year. Last year, it was just under eight cents, and two years ago, the rate was 8.53 cents. So we're down from two years ago. Are there any questions before we vote on this notice to the taxpayers?
I'm going to ask you something, not so much about this, but just generalized question. The goal, if I'm remembering correctly, is to try to stay under that nine cent mark? Is that correct?
Um, I guess the goal is to receive our maximum revenue.
Right.
Each year, but as far as a rate target, yeah, we want that rate to be low, but assessed value plays such a big part that it's sort of like out of our control, and so we don't really have a set target that we can work towards since we can't control assessed value.
Okay.
But I can just say that when I got here in 2011, the rate at that time was 10.97, so it was almost 11 cents. So over the years, even though the levy goes up by three or four percent every year, assessed value has gone up in most cases by more than that, so that's why we keep coming down from 11 cents.
Okay.
Down to eight cents now, and who knows what will happen with assessed value as it goes forward, but.
That's right. Okay, any other questions about the public advertising notice? All in favor of the motion to approve the fiscal year 2026 budget for public advertising notice, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. Motion approved. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the Labor Management Agreement?
So moved. Second. Okay. Greer, is that you?
So, the Labor Management Agreement is in the packet. It's 20 pages long. I'm not going to read the whole thing to you, but I wanted to give you a little bit of an overview of what the Labor Management Committee is, as well as introduce the folks that were on that committee. So our Labor Management Committee, or LMC, is a formal group which serves to facilitate goodwill and partnership between the library and our staff union, AFSMI. We recognize that this partnership benefits from regular ongoing discussions, and to that end, we meet at least quarterly to address any new issues that have arisen within the scope of the board resolution. There are three members from each party who represent the union and the library. So currently for the LMC, it is Josh Wolfe, Sam Ott, and myself who represent the library, and Mick Breeze, Avalon Snell, and Paula Gray over to him, who represent the union. Every three years, the LMC comes together to review and update the collective bargaining agreement, which is what's in the packet. The committee for this one consisted of Josh Wolfe, Sam Ott, and myself representing the library, and then Mick Breeze, Avalon Snell, and Lauren Onderjack representing the union. All of those folks are in the audience, I won't make them stand up. So we began by meeting in the spring and are pleased to present several updates to the agreement. The agreement itself was included. The changes that were made are relatively minor, so I'll just go over those for you. The changes include, we changed amendment-wide language to remove any gendered pronouns, so she, he, her, his were updated with they, them, their, the employee, the manager. Article Five, Section Five, was updated to list the union officers who receive their reports every six months and codified the method of communication and the confidential nature of the information. Do you guys want me to read each of these sections to go through the updates or just summary?
Yes, some reason.
Okay. Article Seven, Sections Five, or Four, Five, and Six were added regarding training for new LMC members and an annotated version of the agreement with plain language. And Article 11, Section Five, was revised to better represent department sizes for union representation during our agreement negotiations, and added wording about the library representatives being shared with union representation in the same manner that union representatives are shared with the library. And then Article 14, Section Six, was added to outline the process for scheduling a special meeting in the case of layoffs or recalls. So if approved by the board, this new agreement that we present tonight would remain in effect from August 20th, 2025, through August 16th of 2028. Are there any questions on the changes to the agreement?
Thank you.
No. Okay. No. Pardon me? Yes. Okay.
Sorry.
No, that's all right. Yes, I'm just thinking, okay? I'm thinking. Thank you. No other questions or concerns, comments? Okay. All in favor of approving the Labor Management Agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion approved. Do I have a motion to hear the acceptance of in-kind gift?
So moved. Second. Let's hear more.
Okay. We are grateful to have received a proposed in-kind gift in the form of a sewing machine for our downtown teen space. Per our, yes, Sam is going to demonstrate it, and he's an expert in sewing machines, as I understand. So per our gift policy, any in-kind gift like this needs to be reviewed by the board in consultation with myself before we formally accept it. The benefits of this gift are in the form of a sewing machine for our downtown teen space. Per our, yes, Sam is gonna demonstrate it. He's an expert in sewing machines, as I understand. So per our gift policy, any in-kind gift like this needs to be reviewed by the board in consultation with myself before we formally accept it. The benefits of this gift are that it makes it easier to host sewing programs by having more than one machine in-house. Holding a machine sewing programs right now is involved a lot of waiting around for each teen to take turn on the machine. And having a second machine greatly reduces the wait times and will make it more feasible for staff to lead these programs. It also draws attention to the craft itself, which in turn helps spawn curiosity and experimentation. And this is a higher-quality machine with better safety features than the one we currently have. So we're seeking a vote to accept this in-kind gift for use in our teen space.
Can I ask about what kind of training you have received for this machine?
So I know nothing about this. This is all being done by the teen librarian Claire Spence. They're in charge of all of these events. But the person who donated this, Abby Cox, is actually a historical costuming YouTuber that lives in Bloomington. And when she donated it, she came and did a training for Claire on how to use it. And we're actually going to be partnering with her and one of her friends, Nicole Rudolph, as well, to do programs in the teen space for kids on sewing. So they're going to be around regularly to help us with that.
Great.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking about longevity of that machine.
Yes, no, Claire is going to be very protective of it and make sure everybody goes through training. We're probably going to institute a policy where if a kid wants to use it, they have to sit down with Claire to go through everything on their own to make sure of that. But this machine is also, Claire wanted me to emphasize, much safer for the teens to use. And it's got a lot more built-in features to prevent it getting snagged or messed up. Whereas our current one, that happens a lot.
Great.
What's the brand?
Janome, I think.
What a fantastic gift.
Yeah, I know. I was blown away. It was very generous, and we're really excited to be working with them as well.
That's great. Any other questions? All in favor of accepting this gift, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Can't wait. Can't wait to see what comes out of this in a future report.
They've already made something with this. They're doing a jester collar program, and they made that already. And it took them half the time it would have taken normally.
Oh, wow. Great. Thank you.
Winter sign-ups for the class.
Okay. And next we have department update from Lisa Champelli.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to share an update with you about the work that Collection Development Team does to provide a wide variety of materials to members of our community. I'll briefly touch on some of the questions that we've been wrestling with as the publishing industry continues to evolve at a rapid pace. And please do ask any questions that you have of me. I support a terrific group of 10 dedicated colleagues who handle different aspects of the work that goes into collection development. The work begins with our collection development librarians who are continually learning about new and forthcoming titles, deciding on both physical and digital materials, which things to add to our collections. And they also look at what should be weeded based on lack of use or lack of space or need for updated content. Our acquisitions and processing duo submit orders to vendors, handle invoicing and receiving all of the materials that come into the library. And they prepare these materials for cataloging, which is handled by both our cataloging and metadata librarian and our copy cataloging assistant. And once our catalogers have ensured that our collection codes and spine labels are correctly listed in our catalog, they brought items over to our materials processor, who handles adding any kind of supplementary labels or identifying stickers or sometimes jacket covers as needed. We also have a collections maintenance assistant who helps keep our weeding schedule on track by regularly running reports on collection usage, supplying lists of items for selectors to consider for weeding based on the criteria that we use. He also supports the actual weeding process and our digitization projects. While collection development involves a lot of decision-making about what materials to add to the collections, it also includes some logistical where and how questions, such as from where should we order our materials? And how are they going to be processed in order to be shelved properly and listed in our catalog? For years, MCL has used Baker &amp; Taylor, one of the largest suppliers of books for public and academic libraries in the nation. We've used them as our primary vendor. Baker &amp; Taylor has multiple warehouses. We can order books at a discounted price and have them arrive with barcodes and often spine labels already attached. In previous years, it was common for Baker &amp; Taylor to have hundreds of copies on hand in their warehouses in order to easily fulfill orders from libraries across the country. But as more and more businesses have streamlined their operations and looked for ways to meet known demand rather than anticipated demand, we are finding that Baker &amp; Taylor does not always have enough items in stock to meet our need, and sometimes there's no titles available. They've gone to kind of an alert system of pending or, you know, we'll update accordingly. So it is a way to kind of message selectors and give them a chance to think about whether they should proceed with ordering from Baker &amp; Taylor or whether they should look to other options, such as Ingram, which is the secondary vendor, book vendor that we use. Yet, often, the titles that we seek are in stock with Amazon. And patrons eagerly awaiting new titles can see that it's readily available for Amazon and wonder why we don't already have it on order. So this poses a little bit of a dilemma for us as we want to provide our community members with the titles they're seeking as quickly as we can. But we also want to order as economically as we can and have those materials arrive to us with some of that pre-processing already in place so that it's a little faster for us then to get it to the shelves and ready for borrowing. So if we order from Amazon, it may get delivered to us quickly, but it's a more cumbersome ordering and receiving process for us that can sometimes slow the overall time that it would take for the item to become available for borrowing. We also continue to see a shift in usage of our collection with a growing interest in borrowing digital eBooks and audiobooks and a slight decline in the amount of physical materials that are borrowed from the library. This impacts collection development in a couple ways. First, eBooks and digital audiobooks are generally more expensive than print materials. So that's, you know, stretching our budget a little bit there. Second, when fewer physical materials are checked out from the library, that means that a smaller percentage of our total collection, a smaller percentage is residing outside of the library. You know, we count on people borrowing our materials so that they'll live in their homes, in their classrooms for a little while. So if there's not as much going out, then we just have to make sure that we've got space on our shelves to accommodate our existing collections and factor in being able to have space for new items and look at how quickly are we moving through some of the lists of things to consider for discard. Let's see, another issue that impacts collection development is just the way that people search for and discover library resources. Are patrons coming into the library to browse the shelves? Do they start their searching in our library catalog or on our website? Or is it general Google search? If people are increasingly satisfied with that AI overview that summarizes your Google search results, does that mean that fewer people are going to be seeking out library resources in some of the online reference databases that we subscribe to? So learning how people search for information and reading material, understanding what devices they use to access our resources and what formats they prefer, in addition to the authors and subjects they're most interested in, all inform what we choose to add to our collections and how it's organized and made available for borrowing. And we're always keeping in mind the who of collection development. Who are we developing this collection for? We serve a Monroe County community of 140,000 residents who each can call this library their own. And as we strive to meet the needs and interests of people in our community, we want to learn what community members would like to find at their library. Every MCL cardholder is welcome to submit a suggestion for purchase, and collection development librarians consider each one carefully. So our community is part of our collection, is an integral, essential part of our collection development process. And if a community member informs us of an objection that they have to a particular item in the library, we also give that careful review. We note and follow up on any concerns that patrons may mention just in conversation with staff. But when a community member submits a formal request for reconsideration to us, that completed form initiates an official review process. And this process begins with the library director, who acknowledges receipt of the request for reconsideration and alerts the individual submitting the form of our timeline for review and response. The director convenes a review committee of staff members from collection development and other departments. And the review committee may also include a non-staff member, someone from our community is sometimes invited to join that as well. All members of the review committee read or watch the item in question in its entirety. And committee members then meet to discuss the item, the objection to the item, and also consider how our collection development policy guides our decision-making for what items are added to our collections. And did this item meet the criteria that we have as part of our selection criteria? Committee members then draft a recommended response to the request for reconsideration and submit that to the director to consider. And then the library director informs the patron and our board of trustees of MCL's response. MCL then logs and shares the results of that request for reconsideration review with MCL staff as a whole via our intranet. We also notify the American Library Association of the request for reconsideration and the outcome of our review. While we hope that we don't need to undertake this type of review very often, the request for reconsideration process really gets to the core of what a public library is all about. It's an opportunity for us to reflect with the people that we serve about the decision-making that goes into collection development. And it's a chance for us to discuss how we best uphold the principles of intellectual freedom that are embedded in our values and our collection development policy. And ultimately, that review process helps us determine whether we are indeed, as our collection development policy stipulates, affirming the rights of individuals in our community to form their own opinions about the materials they choose to use. What I have to share with you today. Do you have any questions for me?
I just applaud how you guys do everything. One question I did wonder about, when you said Google search versus the computer, they still have to figure out where it is here, though, within your, I mean, they might be searching to see what the summary is of it, but not necessarily when they come here, they're still going to have to find if they don't know how to use a library.
Right, yeah.
So you'd still need your appliances, I mean, your computer's here, right?
Yes, yes. So what it gets us thinking about is that AI summary, if you're reading that, sometimes you're like, okay, I got an overview of what diabetes is all about. I'm good to go. Some people, so to speak. I got it, yeah. One paragraph, I'm good to go. But the shift in kind of the Google searching is that you don't necessarily see that link that might follow you to, you know, lead you to additional resources. So it just, you know, has us wondering a little bit about what, how is it that people, what motivates people to seek out, you know, kind of additional resources from the library? And, you know, we think it's incredibly important to provide authoritative resources on health and history and everything in between. But how do we help our community members know the benefit of coming to the library and/or seeking out library resources for their information?
Thank you.
I appreciate your point about the challenge of slightly lower circulation of physical materials. That isn't something that I would have thought about, is the library needing to find space for having more items checked in than maybe you have ever in the past. So it's an interesting perspective. Thanks for sharing that.
Certainly, yeah. And Steph, coming up next, can really, you know, speak to how that impacts circulation services, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steph, you want to step up and tell us more about circulation? We would love to hear it.
Hi, thanks for having me. Yeah, I'm Stephanie Meyer, the circulation services manager, and I'm happy to meet those of you that I haven't met yet, a couple of you. To first introduce circulation services, and some of you may not know the size, I have 29 staff in total. There are two full-time circulation technicians, six, three that are full-time for circulation leads, and three that are part-time, and then 21 in total materials handlers, seven of which work 25 hours a week, and the rest of them, the remaining 14 work 15 hours a week. So we're a large department, quite varied. It's a good time up there. But in today's update, I'll go over some processes that we've developed to maintain item displays, some general organization and tidiness in all of our collections. I'll highlight our 2025 interlibrary loan statistics, and I'll end with a summer reading overview. Since January, the circulation leads and I have developed and finalized a system that we call the Shelf Maintenance Team Project. On the surface, it was started as a way to systematically engage the whole department in tidying the shelves and ensuring the items are spaced correctly, have appropriate displays, and just generally look good, sort of as a follow-up to Lisa's mention that we have more items on the shelf, so it's harder to keep them all looking good all the time. So each lead is responsible for specific sections of each collection. And with all six leads, we cover nearly every item in the downtown library. Materials handlers have been assigned to each lead's team to help out with specific projects when they have some downtime and for variety in their days. Through this project, we've added a whole lot of space to display items both on our shelves and on our end caps. So we've added displays to the tops of the low adult nonfiction shelves. We've moved the hanging slat wall displays from facing the computers to facing the inner aisles of our adult nonfiction area. We've added shelf-end displays to all of our children's collections, as well as continuing to make sure there are plenty of on-shelf displays throughout most of the collections down there. And we've also updated the shelving that our zine collection is on. So it's on different magazine shelving, which has allowed us to better face the items out. So they're not only looking better, but we can display many more of them so that they get used way more now than they did before. This project has also allowed us to keep a much closer eye on the fullness of each collection so that we're more quickly able to address space issues, which helps to better showcase our collections. It's enhanced the communication between CIRC and collection development as the leads have learned more about the flow of item movement within MCL. The project was first imagined to offer the leads more oversight, responsibility, and ownership of the collections. But the impact that it's had on all of the circulation staff has been really great. Most, more staff rather feel ownership about the collections and the library and have developed different skills with regard to how to display and organize materials. It's also providing each circulation lead with different opportunities to be a leader for their colleagues and to continue to develop those skills. So it's been a really fun project to get to start and help watch grow, or to help start and watch grow. The interlibrary loan is a very popular and yet somewhat hidden part of circulation services. I'd like to shout out my circulation technicians, who are Alicia and Erica, who among many other things handle all of our interlibrary loan requests. Our public services staff do play a major role in triaging the MCL patron requests. So they handle the requests that come in to make sure that we can actually get the items. And then once it's deemed that we can, they're sent to circulation to fulfill those. I lost my place. There we are. So MCL has always been a popular lender among the Indiana and out-of-state libraries, and we're on track to beat our 2024 numbers for both lending and borrowing. So in 2024, MCL patrons borrowed 312 items from other libraries, so about six a week all year. In 2025, from January to July, so 31 weeks, MCL patrons have already borrowed 210 items from other libraries, so about seven a week. And then in 2024, we loaned out 3,212 items to other libraries, which is about 62 a week. And so far in 2025, from January to July, we've loaned out 3,069 items, so about 99 items a week. The reason for this increase is in part because the number of requests has increased in the last few years. But we're also able to process more requests, and that's due to stable staffing in that position, the fact that Erica and Alicia are awesome at their jobs, and the changes that we began making to circulation services back in 2022 have allowed for CIRC to continue to stabilize and has encouraged us to reflect on processes, fine-tune the responsibilities and priorities of each position. So I'll complete by bragging a little bit more about circulation services because we have had a really great summer, and that's a little rare. We're all always a little anxious and excited about summer reading as it's our busiest time of year. But we had the most organized and chill summer reading of my six-year tenure here. According to our monthly statistics, we had similar physical item use compared to last year. But very much unlike last year, this summer, we were able to keep up with checking in each day's returns. We were able to shelve all the carts that we had ready within a 48-hour and sometimes a 24-hour turnaround time. There had been multiple days where we had zero carts to shelve, had to find things for my staff to do this summer, and that's really rare. So this sounds simple. returns, as it just opens up space to do that. And we have always had to do that in previous years, and in previous summer readings in particular. We were also able to continuously check and adjust our collections and shelves through our Shelf Maintenance Team Project to ensure that both new materials and returns continue to fit well as they come in, so no space became too cramped. So I specifically highlight this summer reading year as an indicator, because I believe that in the same way that we're now able to fulfill more interlibrary loan requests, we were able to do our work this efficiently, because we're now a really stable and strong department. My staff turnover rate has reduced significantly in the last couple of years. My newest staff have been here for a year now, and having more staff who are experienced make things just go so much smoother. We've also done a lot of reflection, learning, preparing. We've adjusted things when necessary, which has cultivated a lot of communication, and this has made a significant impact on the efficiency of our work, and the culture of our department, and our ability to provide excellent customer, or excellent service to our community. So I'm really proud of where circulation services is as a department, and I'm grateful for a supportive administration and board who have trusted all of my requests. That's all the update that I have for you today. Any questions?
You must be a good leader, if they want to stay with you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we have public comment. Lorraine, do we have anybody online?
Yeah. No public comment?
Okay. Is there anyone here for public? Please step up if you wouldn't mind telling us your name, and try to keep your comments to three to five minutes.
Do I say?
No, come on, come on up. I will give you a, how about a three-minute warning? Does that sound good?
Okay.
Okay.
My name is Lauren Onderjack. I'm a library assistant in adult services here at MCPL, and I want to express my gratitude to both administration and the board for working so quickly together to protect our library from harm caused by Indiana Senate Bill 1, and keeping disruptions to our services to a minimum. Every service that we offer here at the library is vital to our mission, and deciding where to make financial cuts is a nearly impossible task. While it's disappointing to see access to community resources reduced, remaining open seven days a week helps us consistently serve Monroe County. As a staff member, I'm also grateful that there were no layoffs, no reduction in personnel hours, and no loss of pay or benefits. SB 1's impacts have been detrimental to libraries and schools across Indiana, and so I'm thankful that MCPL can continue serving our wonderful community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do you have anyone else? Okay. I move to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have public comment. Lorraine, do we have anybody online?
Yeah. No public comment?
Okay. Is there anyone here for public? Please step up if you wouldn't mind telling us your name, and try to keep your comments to three to five minutes.
Do I say?
No, come on, come on up. I will give you a, how about a three-minute warning? Does that sound good?
Okay.
Okay.
My name is Lauren Onderjack. I'm a library assistant in adult services here at MCPL, and I want to express my gratitude to both administration and the board for working so quickly together to protect our library from harm caused by Indiana Senate Bill 1, and keeping disruptions to our services to a minimum. Every service that we offer here at the library is vital to our mission, and deciding where to make financial cuts is a nearly impossible task. While it's disappointing to see access to community resources reduced, remaining open seven days a week helps us consistently serve Monroe County. As a staff member, I'm also grateful that there were no layoffs, no reduction in personnel hours, and no loss of pay or benefits. SB 1's impacts have been detrimental to libraries and schools across Indiana, and so I'm thankful that MCPL can continue serving our wonderful community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do you have anyone else? Okay. I move to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have public comment. Lorraine, do we have anybody online?
Yeah. No public comment?
Okay. Is there anyone here for public? Please step up if you wouldn't mind telling us your name, and try to keep your comments to three to five minutes.
Do I say?
No, come on, come on up. I will give you a, how about a three-minute warning? Does that sound good?
Okay.
Okay.
My name is Lauren Onderjack. I'm a library assistant in adult services here at MCPL, and I want to express my gratitude to both administration and the board for working so quickly together to protect our library from harm caused by Indiana Senate Bill 1, and keeping disruptions to our services to a minimum. Every service that we offer here at the library is vital to our mission, and deciding where to make financial cuts is a nearly impossible task. While it's disappointing to see access to community resources reduced, remaining open seven days a week helps us consistently serve Monroe County. As a staff member, I'm also grateful that there were no layoffs, no reduction in personnel hours, and no loss of pay or benefits.